Again, I'd like to welcome you to our City Council meeting, April 24th. Tonight, we have 11 items on our agenda. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Fawcett, please continue with roll call members.
Patrick.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Neil.
Here.
Kearney.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Florina.
Here.
Corcoran.
Here.
Clay.
Here.
You want to call Kearney again?
Kearney.
Okay. She's it, alright. At this time, if everybody would, could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes from the previous meeting have been distributed for review. Do we have a motion to accept those minutes? Mrs. Neal, seconded by Mrs. Gray. Roll call on the motion to accept the minutes, please. Patrick.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
And we have accepted the minutes from our last meeting. At this time, we have reports of our committees. Can anybody go first? Ms. Patrick?
Thank you. I have a report on six items on tonight's agenda. One's through the special committee, and we also have utilities and transit ordinances. Number five is the second reading of a resolution to place on the November ballot the question, should City Council and Council President be elected for four-year terms? If passed by the voters, the Council President and members' term would increase from two to four years on the first day of January following the next regular election, which would be January 1st, 2020. This resolution will go all three reads. Number six, it's the second reading of an ordinance that would add two sections to our city ordinances. The sections added would state that each member of council and council president shall be elected for a term of four years. This ordinance can only go into effect if the increase in term length is passed by the voters. Again, this will go all three reads. Item number seven, it's the second reading of an ordinance accepting and adopting the new City of Chillicothe Transit System procurement policy, the Chillicothe Transit System Financial Management Policies, and the CTS QuickBooks counts of payable and receivable procedures for the Transit Department. These are policies that are required by ODOT. Transit will be having their CAR review, which is Technical Assistance Review, on May 17th, and these policies need to be in place before then. This can go all three reads. Number nine is the first reading appropriating $7,000 to install a dry well sum behind 169 E7 Street. This alley runs parallel with E7 Street and is between Madeira and Hickory Streets. The low point of this alley is behind 169 E7 Street, which results in standing water as much as 10 inches deep. There are no storm sewers close enough to tie into, so to correct this problem, our utilities group will install a dry sum. The estimated cost is $7,000, and this will be paid out of the stormwater line item in the budget we fund each year. There's $30,000 in that line item right now. And this will go all three reads. Number 10 is the first reading to install a streetlight at the southeast corner of East Main and Logan Street intersection. The residents in that area have complained that this intersection is very dark at night. Safety Service Director Carmen looked at the intersection and agrees with the residents. His suggestion is to add a streetlight to the existing pole. The cost of an additional light will be approximately $17 per month. This will go all three reads. Item number 11, it's the first reading accepting and adopting the new safety, security, and emergency preparedness plan and the blood form pathogens exposure plan for the Transit Department. Again, these policies are required by ODOT, and Transit will be having their CAR review on May 17th, and these policies need to place before then. This can go two reads, and at the next meeting, I will ask to waive the three read rule at our May 8th meeting. And I've got two items to update you on. Item number 16-030 is a request to allow one sewer lateral to serve three structures on the same property at 475 Douglas. Mr. Phillips, his attorney, Utilities Director Johnson, Law Director Rutherford, and I met Wednesday, the 19th about this. A long discussion was held and resulted in giving Mr. Phillips several options as to how he can proceed to connect to our sewer line, all that would be in compliance with our ordinances. Once he decides how he wants to proceed, I will let everybody know. And the other one was number 17-033 is a request for approval to trade in the old backhoe to purchase the new backhoe. And I would like to, I initially was going to say we were waiting on a second value estimate, but Auditor Spetnagle was nice enough to go and look up the information, so we do have it. It's in the ballpark of the $6,000 we're getting on trade-in, so I will go ahead and turn that one into the Law Director's office tomorrow for legislation. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Patrick. Any other committee reports at this time? Mr. Phil.
The Safety Service and Technology Committees have one item on tonight's agenda. It is item number three, at second reading, to appropriate $697.58 for the purchase of a video projector for use by City Council. I also want to announce a committee meeting on Monday, this coming Monday, which will be May the 1st at 6:00, and that will deal with assignment 16-016, Strategic Plan, 16-108, Website Improvement. So we'll talk about both those at that time, 6:00, Monday, May the 1st. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Any other committee reports? Yes, Ms. Kearney?
Yes, the Community Affairs Committee met April 17th, and we discussed the value of supporting the Health District levy. Of course, everyone here in terms of council members had indicated that they were very much in support of that levy, but the committee went as far as to look at the fact that we, as a community, must help some health services. So therefore, we know that it will be in our best interest, just not only in terms of the services that they offer, but also financially for the community, for the city, because that money would have to come from someplace to support this levy. And I don't know, Ms. Patrick talked about maybe someone might be here today, and we certainly would like to give them an opportunity to speak more about the Health District levy.
We do have a speaker from the Health District here this evening, yes.
Also, while I'm giving my report, we also looked at the community yard sale, and that will be coming, it is in the Law Director's office, and really appreciate our staff. First thing that I've been in their office since being on City Council, so it was good to go in there and meet our staff, and they were very helpful. So we will be requesting for a resolution to waive the yard sale permit to support the city's community yard sale for the weekend of June 2nd and June 4th. And also, while I'm speaking in terms of this with the Community Affairs, I know when I looked at my committee in terms of what it does, I was really kind of thinking, wondering, what does it entail? But after meeting with the group and talking and getting a lot of suggestions, there are lots of things that we need to look at in terms of community-wide as council. So I will be getting back with that committee to look at some things that we can do. I did have an opportunity Friday to go down and spend some time at Holden Park, and there are families there, there are young people there, and just being there, the people are willing to talk, and it gives them hope. So I'm hoping that we can move beyond these walls and begin to actually get out into the community, because that was really, it wasn't just an eye-opener for me, but it was a feeling of, yeah, this is what we need. They need to know that we care and we're in the community. So we need a flag down there at Holden Park. We've got a nice pole there, but there's no flag there. So just those little things like that, but it really makes a difference. So the Community Affairs Committee may be busier than what you think.
Excellent. Excellent. Speaking of Holden Park, that's my old stomping grounds. That's where I grew up, and I know they're still down there in that neighborhood. So, yeah, that was a nice part to grow up in. Thank you. Appreciate that, Ms. Kearney. And we look forward to your involvement with the community.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Yes, Mr. Clay?
Thank you, President Arnold. City Services has one item on the agenda tonight, item number four, is that for a second reading, an ordinance to appropriate $16,900 to upgrade the HVAC control system in the city administration building. I just want to clarify what this is, to upgrade the control system, not the entire HVAC system. And this new system is going to be more efficient, and it's going to result in a savings in our monthly utilities bill, and we estimate that that savings could be significant enough to pay for the upgrades within a couple of years. So that's a win for not only the city, but also for the taxpayers. That's all that we have on the agenda tonight, but I do want to report on a couple of other assignments that City Services currently has open. One would be the facilities plan. That is an open-ended assignment that we're continuing to explore. I did discuss with the mayor, we will be getting a list of the current buildings that are owned by the city so that we can explore those buildings and begin targeting some for the possibility of sale. We also will be getting an assignment within the next couple of days for exploring the lease of the current city school's bus facility. They are expecting to vacate that facility, and we would like to explore the possibility of leasing that for City Services so that we can get the equipment and the city employees out of the armory and out of the city park. I'll let the mayor expand on that later, but we do have some good news in that area. We will also, we also have the current assignment for the city recycling program open. At the last meeting, we asked for the mayor to go out for bids to get an estimate for what the tipping fees would be. Those bids are coming in, and so we will be further exploring this. I would like to report, or I'd like to announce two meetings. One will be Monday, the 1st. It'll be following the Finance Committee, and that will be a meeting of City Services to discuss the facilities plan, and once we get the assignment for the lease of the Transit Facility or the Bus Facility, we'll also be discussing that at that meeting. And then on the 8th, at 6:30 PM, before City Council meets in regular session, City Services will need to discuss recycling and to discuss the facilities plan in further detail. And that concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Phil. Mr. Clay, I appreciate that. And anybody else? Yes, Mr. Tattler.
Thank you, President Arnold. The Engineering Committee does have one item on tonight. It's the third reading of number two, but due to the fact that we are going to have a meeting, public hearing, on May the 8th before we vote on this, I'm going to request that we not read this item tonight.
Okay. Do you have any legislation since we go through? Is he making the request?
Yeah.
He said, okay, I have a second by Mr. Paul. Roll call on not reading item number two tonight. Patrick.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
Also, some of the calls I've gotten, I've gotten calls on recycling and, of course, drug issues. One of entertainment is requests for a dog park. I don't know if that's in the works or not, but my granddaughter would really like to see a dog park. I'm not sure if we have enough room down in Elk County Park, but I think there could be an area down there that'd be fenced in for a dog park.
Well, actually, there has been a conversation, I don't know where it's at right now, but that was something they were looking at, at the Coppell Soccer Complex. To the left, I don't know if you've been out there yet, but to the left of the playground area is a nice big area, and that's, you know, that's not necessarily downtown, but it is one of our parks that is looking at that.
But I think the downtown area would be better for people as far as, you know, central Chillicothe. At least, that's my feeling. And also, it keeps her big dog from doing business in my yard. That concludes my report.
Thanks, Mr. Tattler. Two things, the review session, what time is that, on May 8th?
Scheduled.
7:00. Okay. You have, that's fine. We should, you, Mr. Clay, you think from 6:30 to 7 for the review, you got enough time?
Let's move our meeting up to 6:00 PM on Monday.
6:00, give me an hour if that'd work.
Thank you.
All right, sounds good.
Oh, my apologies, I should have checked.
No, that's okay. I just, that was one thing. And another piece, back in my tenure before, area they were working at, Dog Park, was an area up off of, up by the reservoir, up on top of the hill, up on Crowell Hill. There's some city land next to the reservoir up there, so we see an old park, and they talked about Dog Park.
They put more park equipment out there, so.
Yeah, they've added some things.
Have they done that one?
Tree commission has added.
Okay. Yeah, very nice little trees, thanks so much.
Any other committee? Yes, Ms. Neal?
Just in regards to legislation, Parks and Recreation, number one, President Arnold's supporting Camp Sherman Days, the celebration of the 100th anniversary of Camp Sherman, and this will be the third reading.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, Ms. Florina?
Thank you, President Arnold. Safety Services has nothing on the agenda, not a big report. I will announce a meeting for the 26th, which is Wednesday at 6:30. We have several items to go through, and to conclude my report, there'll be an email distribution on the actual numbers, 6:30.
Okay. We have a lot of meetings coming up. Any other committee reports this evening? Yes, Ms. Neal?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three items to report on. The first one is 17055, and that is donating 52 Western Avenue to the Land Bank. We just had a meeting, a committee meeting, prior to the council meeting, and everyone approved that legislation request, and so it will be going to the Law Director for the next meeting agenda. The next thing I have is assignment 17035. That's to accept and appropriate $4,022 from a HUD housing loan payoff. So this one is currently in the Law Director's office, and it should be on next agenda. The last one is 17053. It's a resolution for the Ohio Regional Development Corporation to file application with the State of Ohio for Chillicothe to participate in the 2017 CDVG Community Allocation Program and the 2017 CDVG Community Development Critical Infrastructure Competitive Set-Aside Program. So those items are, this item is routine, we do this every year, so both assignment 053 and 035 are in the Law Director's office, and we should see them for a first read next council meeting.
Excellent.
And that concludes my report.
Okay, well, excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other reports this evening before we move on? Not seen any. At this time, I would like to introduce, well, the reports of our officials, and the first one would be our mayor, and I think the mayor always has good things to tell us, and I think tonight he has very good news to tell us. So, Mr. Finney.
Thank you, President Arnold. Following up on what Beth just reported on, this year will be the first year we're applying for that competitive grant, and this is the agency that helps us, that competitive grant, and you know why I'm talking about this, because anytime I get a chance to talk about sidewalks, they do, that's the money for the sidewalk on Western Avenue. So they are, they are the agency that's always helped us with the grant application and grant management. So just for tonight's items, the one that I really wanted to emphasize is item eight. I've expressed my support for the Ross County Health District levy. I think you all know, we spent quite a bit of time this winter discussing the possibilities, the implications for the city. If we do not pass a Health District, they are fairly dire. So on the one hand, the Health District does very good things, and we want to personally encourage that continued good work. And on the other hand, there are various implications, not only for the community, but for the city as well, if that levy does not pass. So I give it my wholehearted support, and I would encourage, I'm thankful for council considering the topic tonight, and I would encourage council's support and passage tonight. And then I believe that the item that President Arnold was referring to, and I just saw a school board member walk in, is, and also council and Clay mentioning, is some ongoing negotiations we've been having at the school district regarding 89 Riverside Drive, which is the school district's school bus facility. And, you know, going back several months, everybody remembers our BAT issue and the need to exit our Riverside facility hastily, and we got into the armory. I'm told that I promised to get out of the armory by April 1st. I'm not certain that I promised, but I don't know why anybody would disagree with Connie, so. We have passed April 1st, but we've had some really good conversations and negotiations with the school district, and I believe that tonight the school district has voted to pass a resolution, that they intend to sell that facility to the city with some certain lease terms. And so I think we can take our time in the committee meeting to go into those details, but it was a very good experience working for the city. I think the exciting thing for the city is that, in the short term, it offers an answer to the question we had about getting our workers out of the armory, getting that equipment out of the armory, returning that to a more pleasant, accessible area. And then in the long term, the neat thing for me is that the master plan for the parks actually identifies that parcel of land as being a parcel that the city should strive to acquire over time. So it appears to be solving both a short-term and a long-term issue for us. And so I think we can, we can work through some of that in committee. That will be next Monday night, will be the first meeting on that. But again, I want to thank the school district, they're very good to work with, you know, especially with all the action that the school district's been involved in lately, the exciting proposition of their new schools. I feel very good that we have a good partner in the school district, and I think this is just another example of that. So I look forward to that committee meeting, and with that, I will conclude my report.
Thank you very much, Mayor Finney. Moving on with our auditor, Ms. Spetnagle, do you have anything to report?
I don't have any items on the agenda today, but I do want to show my support for the Ross County Health District. I think it's very important to our community, it's our report.
Thank you, very good. Now, Law Director and Ms. Rutherford?
Thank you, President Arnold. I'd just like to let council know that our new phone system was installed last week, I think it was April 20th. So far, so good. We're hoping that new system will help us communicate with our citizens and the administration more efficiently, and my staff and I wish to thank council for addressing this need. And that ends my report.
Thank you very much. I don't have anything to report this evening, other than, again, I think to reiterate the need for the passage of the Health District for the community, for not only our health and actually wealth as well. Not that it's generating money, but it costs money to have something like that. But I do want to give my support, and I also, as I started earlier, I'd like to introduce everybody this evening, Ben Avery from the Ross County Health Department. He's here tonight to give a presentation and give us some information about the Health District this evening. Thank you very much for being here, Ben.
You're welcome. President Arnold, members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight in favor of the Health Levy. The vote's on May 2nd, that's just a week from tomorrow, so we're really getting down to crunch time. My name's Ben Avery. Like President Arnold said, I'm the new administrator for the Ross County Health District. And at the Health District, we have a vision to positively impact every citizen in Ross County. And we do this through a number of different programs. We have a WIP program, that looks on nutritional needs for pregnant mothers and infants. We have a maternal-child health program. One aspect of that program is baby and meat tobacco-free, where we help pregnant mothers quit smoking. And then, once they have their children, we have incentive-based programs that encourage them to stay smoke-free. There's also a crips and kids portion in that program, so we're dealing with safe sleep education, and also, we're able to get new mothers crips to encourage that safe sleep. We have BCMH of the Health District, and this is a program that works with children with medical handicaps, helps link them to needed services in the community, needed health services. Our Injury Prevention Program is a grant through the High Department of Health, where our coordinator is able to work with local physicians and help them with prescribing guidelines to only prescribe as many opiates or what is needed for that injury. The evidence shows that there's a direct correlation between the number of opiates they're prescribed in a community and their addiction rates. So keeping that in mind, we're allocating resources to that program. We also have, our VFC program is Vaccines for Children. The school-aged children are required to have a number of vaccines, and they can get those at the Health District. In fact, there's a lot of doctors in the area that don't carry a lot of these vaccines because they know that they can come to the Ross County Health District and get vaccinated. We do outreach clinics, multiple outreach flu clinics in the city, where folks can come in and get a flu vaccine. We also have these clinics in every township in the county, so we can build that wall of immunity in the community and protect those folks that can't get vaccinated. There's also your more standard environmental programs that we run, our food safety programs. We license 350 grocery stores and restaurants in the county, and we're in a majority of those facilities at least twice a year, and more often if necessary, if follow-up is required. Our sewage treatment system program makes sure that new sewage treatment systems get solved properly, that they function for a long period of time, and we also work with older systems. If they're failing, we try to work with homeowners to find solutions. The Health District has partnered with the Ross County Commissioners for our WPCLF grant, and this helps low to moderate income individuals fix their failing sewage treatment system. In a lot of cases, it will pay for 100% of the costs. So you can hear a common theme here tonight, is that the Health District, it brings in a lot of grant money to the county. It wasn't long ago, you could look at our financial statements and see that for every dollar in levy funds that we brought in, we brought in additional $4 in grant programs. So there's an economic argument to be made for supporting the Health District. I'm sure you're all well aware now, at this point, that all these programs won't go away if this levy fails. There's an alternative funding mechanism for the Health District, and that is to come to the city and the townships or inside village to support mandated Health District programs if our levy fails. I know the city has not budgeted for this, and many of our townships cannot afford to support the types of programs that we have now underneath this levy. When I'm in the community, a couple of things I hear a lot is, I had no idea how many different programs you ran around at the health district. And I fully admit that we can do a better job of getting out and speaking to the public about that, and that's something that we're going to make a priority going forward. The next thing they want to know is, how much is this going to cost? How much would this levy cost if I supported it? The answer to that question is, for every one hundred thousand dollars of assessed property value, a homeowner will have to pay two dollars and ninety-two cents a month to support this levy. And it's important to note that that's assessed property value. That's typically much less than your appraised value. As a matter of fact, I was on the auditor's site today, and it can be as low as thirty-five percent of the appraisal value. So for many folks in this county, choosing to support this levy could be very similar to the decision to buy a bottled water a month. This is a one-bill levy that we are running next Tuesday. We have operated on a one-bill levy since nineteen ninety-two, so this is not a new tax. Unfortunately, it's important for me to make it clear that the ballot language, when you're at the poll, is going to call this an additional levy. The reason we have to use that language is because our previous levy expired. So you will see additional levy. A vote for this measure will restore the same funding level that we've been operating on since nineteen ninety-two. I think the last point I wanted to make was that, two weeks ago, the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation County Health Rankings came out, and Ross County ranked eighty-first out of eighty-eight counties in the county health ranking. So that means seven out of eight counties in the state of Ohio has better health outcomes than Ross County. So I think this clearly evidences the need for this health levy and these programs that we operate. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
What are some of the mandated programs that you have?
Okay. Our, our VCMH program with the children with medical handicaps is mandated. The VFC program, which is vaccinations for children under the age of fourteen. Many environmental health programs, our sewage treatment systems program, our private water systems program, food service operations. Tattoo and body art will be some of the mandated programs. Retail food establishments, like your grocery stores, another food safety program that we offer.
Some of these programs, am I correct, Ben, that if, the mandated programs, that if we are not able to facilitate here in Ross County those programs, they might move them and those jobs to another area, to another county, and regionalize them out of there? And so we would, we could lose jobs also?
Yeah, it is, it's a distinct possibility down the road, that if we're not able to support all the mandated services, that another county could come into Ross County and offer us those services and hand us the bill. And we would lose local control then, and that's certainly something that we don't want to have happen.
And income tax and...
Mr. Gray, I appreciate you coming in this evening, thank you very much.
Thank you.
By all means, very worthwhile services that you do to us here in the community for us here in the community at an extremely moderate price. I mean, I, you can't, you can't imagine really what we, what we gain from a little bit of cost individual people for this.
Thank you.
I appreciate you coming in, thank you. Moving on, I didn't have anybody on the list to speak this evening, but we have audience participation. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak this evening? Not seen yet. At this point, we'll move on to old business. Does anybody have any old business they would like to bring up?
I would like to, uh...
Yes, Ms. Gray? Yes.
I would like to find out exactly when we could go back and review our budget in terms of the police department, because we had talked about that when we did the budget for the year, that we would look at the possibility of adding two, two, I think we said, two or three. So I was wondering if it would be possible for us to do that at some point. I still think that we need to put more of them on the street than doing a great job. But I, I think if we have that in the budget, that we should look at that. And I'm kind of he-hawing around because I'm looking at my colleagues, did you say whether or not, did we say that or not?
We did have a, we did say, it's just allowing proper time as far as a look back is concerned, and I think that that would be coming upon the auditor, maybe saying, hey, this is enough time, has passed to look into the budget, see what has occurred, and where we can properly forecast whether or not it's feasible. I did know that, you know? So, I mean, you're not alone, there, there was a statement that was clearly, we would look into it.
I think Clay on doing a budget review with the next couple of weeks, I just haven't gotten with Mr. Paul, I think that they got, but it will be the next week.
I think that when we had that initial discussion, it was Mayor Jim when we were doing the look back.
Right, so what hap, well, you know, just before the halfway point of the year.
Good for you.
Okay, good. Any other old business, Mr. Paul?
Yeah, I, I just kind of wanted to express some thoughts on one of the items that is on tonight's agenda, but it's, it's not at a, at a vote yet, which is item number five, the four-year term. And, you know, I respect the idea of putting something like this before the voter, letting them decide, but I personally have concerns about going to a four-year term versus a two-year. And the idea, of course, I understand, going to a four-year might create some stability within the council, or it might create more security for those wishing to run for council. But I wanted to just kind of point out something that maybe people haven't thought about. And one of the things that's important to me about serving on council is that this is our first chance for a lot of people to serve as a public official, their first step into the political arena, into the public service arena. And having the elections every two years provides a lot of opportunity for people to attempt to do that. And even if it's just running, and even if you're not successful, there's that, that learning and that engagement that occurs because there are so many opportunities. One of my concerns would be going to four years, that we would, instead of attracting more candidates, that we could do the adverse and have less people engaged, because there would be such a gap, and that we might lose opportunities. Just a thought as we, we look at that. You know, I've heard some arguments for and against, and I respect both sides of this argument. I know that, you know, as a candidate that has to run, there is that expense that's involved with it, but I also think that if it's a four-year job, we may be amiss if we think that the, there will be a savings on campaigning, because a four-year job might be more desirable and thus drive up the cost on local elections, and I fear maybe even make it more of a partisan issue. So that's just my two cents on that particular item, and I wanted to share that while we still had time to share, so, thank you.
Anybody else have any old business they'd like to bring up? Not seen any. We move on to petitions and correspondence from our clerk, Mr. Fawcett. Have you had any, anything you'd like to bring forward?
President Arnold, I have nothing to report on tonight.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you. And new business, does anybody have any new business? Yes, Ms. Clark?
Yes, I'd like to recognize the United Way for their Day of Caring this week that they did in conjunction with Chillicothe City Schools students in Yachtanji Park. They cleaned and spruced up the Federation Flower Bed to the left of the armory. Lori Dana's art students and other students from the school are painting a mural down at the municipal pool, which if you had, had a chance, drive by and look at it. I know they did some painting up on Riverside, and I was down there with some of the students, and they were extremely respectful, very kind, and a, and a lot of fun to be around. And they really worked very hard, so I appreciate the teachers and the other volunteers that were with them. And I know that there was a group of volunteers, not from the school, I'm not sure who, I'll bring it later, but that worked with whitey coats out at the Millennium Grove, working on some sprucing up. So if you get a chance to come through the park, and also just to note that the Tree Commission has planted new trees in front of the old transit building, which that area was very much in need, and to just to take a look at the trees that were planted last year along Second Street, the buds that are coming up, and then over on Watch Street and Riverside, the ones that have made it or, you know, that are coming up, and it looks good, so I'd like to compliment all of those people and thank them for helping us keep Chillicothe a part of Tree USA.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Uh, the new business, yes, Ms. Patrick?
I've passed down to council members a copy of the mayor's press release for yard set, yeah, a large item pickup. And on the back is the flyer from the Solid Waste District, and they will be doing electronics and tire recycling on June seventeenth at Fairgrounds from eight to noon. And for all those people that have tires in their backyards, the first five passenger tires are free, so please take advantage of it.
Excellent, thank you.
For the monitors, is it a five per or just a five?
It's five per vehicle. So if you want to, if you've got a pickup truck and you want to throw five tires in, you drive it, you wipe, take your van and throw another five in, it's per vehicle, so...
Okay, good, yeah, thank you.
Any other new business? Yes, Ms. Paul?
I'd like to thank the Four Aces Four H Club, which was collecting items for the Humane Society. They were collecting items such as dog food and, and dog treats for the, the animals out there. The Humane Society operates on a very limited budget, and anytime community members take upon themselves to help out, it's greatly appreciated. So I did want to thank those young people in the Four Aces Four H Club for taking that effort, and it's greatly appreciated, and I'm sure the dogs appreciate it as well. That's all.
Thank you. Any other new business? Not seen any. Meeting dates and assignments, I've scratched meeting dates down there as best as I can. This Wednesday, on the twenty-sixth, we have Safety Services at six-thirty here in Chambers.
Correct.
On Monday, the first, which will be a week from today, we're, we had several different committee meetings that evening. They begin at six o'clock, special, special committee assignments, also facilities, and leasing will be following that. And then on the eighth, we're going to have recycling at six, and then we also have a review session that will be at seven o'clock that evening. I think that pretty well catches everything. New assign...
Is there a review session or something?
The, not a review session, I'm sorry.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, not a review session, I'm sorry. As far as new assignments that have been given out since last meeting, we, it's been a little slow down compared to what I had spent, but we've had four. Development has a request for legislation to give fifty-two Westman Avenue to the land bank. We had a, Mr. Neal brought that up earlier, we have a committee meeting tonight on that. Engineering, a request for legislation to change the intersection of Second and Mulberry and Fourth and Walnut to have stop signs in all directions as needed with no through traffic. Assignment again to engineering is a request for legislation to change Second Street between Mulberry and Walnut Streets back to two-way traffic flow. And to Safety Services, request for legislation to accept and appropriate six thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars from the Ohio Court Technology Grant Fund to upgrade the court's case management software in order to accept electronic payments. And that's been our assignment since the last meeting. At this point, if nothing else to be added, we will move on to legislation. And Mr. Fawcett, whenever you're ready, you can begin with item number one.
Third reading of a resolution supporting Camp Sherman Days, the celebration of the one-hundredth anniversary of Camp Sherman. Third reading.
Roll call on that, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Flarema.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
And that resolution has been approved. We are not reading item number two this evening, we will move on to item number three.
Second reading of an ordinance appropriating six hundred ninety-seven dollars fifty-eight cents for the purchase of a video projector for use by city council and declaring an emergency. Second reading.
Item number four.
Second reading of an ordinance appropriating sixteen thousand nine hundred dollars to upgrade the HVAC control system in the city administration building and declaring an emergency. Second reading.
Item number five.
Second reading of a resolution amending chapter of one-eleven of the revised code, or revised codified ordinances of the city of Chillicothe, Ohio, to provide that the president and members of city council shall be elected for four-year terms and resolving that said amendments should be placed before the electors at the election to be held November seven, twenty-seventeen. Second reading.
Item number six.
Second reading of an ordinance adding sections one-eleven point zero-one C and one-eleven point ten C to the codified ordinances of the city of Chillicothe. Second reading.
Item, excuse me, item number seven.
Second reading of an ordinance accepting and adopting the new City of Chillicothe-Chillicothe Transit System procurement policy, the Chillicothe Transit System financial management policies, and the CTS QuickBooks accounts payable and receivable procedures for the Transit Department. Second reading.
Item number eight.
First reading of a resolution supporting the Ross County Health District levy before voters on May two, twenty-seventeen, and declaring an emergency. First reading.
I'd like to ask you to wave the three reading, please.
I have a motion to wave the three reading, roll, signed by Mr. Clay. Roll call on that motion, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Flarema.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
And council has passed a resolution supporting the Ross County Health District levy. Number nine.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating seven thousand dollars for the installation of a dry sun at the alley behind one-sixty-nine East Seventh Street. First reading.
Item number ten.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing the installation of a street light at the intersection of East Main Street and Logan, Logan Street. First reading. First reading of an ordinance accepting and adopting the new Safety, Security, and Emergency Preparedness Plan and the Bloodborne Pathogens Exposure Control Plan for the Chillicothe Transit Department. First reading.
All righty, that concludes our scheduled business for this evening. Unless there's anything to add, or I have a motion to adjourn, a due by Mr. Florina, signed by Mr. Clay. Roll call on adjournment, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florina.